Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Township of Hillsboro Planning Board Public Meeting on March 2, 2023. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2023 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the Township Clerk, posted on the Township’s website and available at the Hillsboro Township Municipal Complex. Application documents have been made available on the Township’s website, and complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Peazin, Community Commissioner Garelli and Chair Sarachi are currently absent. Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Delkor?
Here.
Mr. Scoville?
Here.
Mr. Hasstag?
Here.
Mr. Radowitz?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Lepani?
Here.
And Vice Chair Julian?
Here.
And then, professionals? Yeah. Mr. Coys?
He’s rolling the screen.
Mr. Hacks?
Here.
Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
And we have the videographer, and I’m here.
Okay, let’s roll through the agenda. There’s no consideration of meeting minutes, there’s no consideration of resolutions, planning board business, assume there’s none.
Nope.
Okay, so, we will open it for business from the floor for matters not on the agenda, and the Chair is here, so I go back to the bullpen.
Let the record reflect the Chairman to rise at 7:07.
Okay. It’s all yours, Scott.
Hey, Dave. Just, I don’t know. We’re just gonna open it up for the public.
Okay. Thanks.
You got damped early.
I got damped.
Spring training, ineffective.
Nah, still trying to stretch the arm out. Short outing.
Definitely pitch it out.
So, there’s only gonna be five minutes.
Sorry. Work held me up. So, we move into the public?
We are to business on the floor now.
Business on the floor, right. Okay, so we will open it up for business from the floor, for matters not on this evening’s agenda, and as I’ve requested in the past, refrain from discussion regarding warehousing, direct or indirect, and we’ll keep comments to five minutes. So if anyone would like to come up, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Judy Haas. My address is Tutius Court in Hillsborough. A couple of weeks ago, I sent a letter to the Board notifying you that your April 6 meeting was going to be conflicting with the second night of Passover, as well as Holy Thursday, and a week off from school, which I felt would curtail attendance at this meeting. And it’s another warehouse, but I thought it was important enough to notify you of that to see if you would be willing to reschedule the meeting, so the fullest attendance could happen for that purpose. Have you had any chance to?
Actually, Mr. Coys and I were talking on my right end, so we’re gonna take up that matter this evening.
I’m sorry?
We’re gonna take up that matter this evening.
Great, thank you very much.
Sure. Any other matters not on the agenda? Okay, seeing that, we’re gonna move on. Okay, we do not have consideration of ordinances, so we’ll begin with this evening’s first public hearing, Jennifer Bryson, with File Number 22-PB-S. Time of decision, March 30th of this year, and this application was adjourned from the February 9th meeting of this year without further notice.
Mr. Chairman, before we go further, I have a certification of absent board member examination executed by Mr. Radowitz, which makes him eligible to participate and vote in this application.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess I’ll swear you guys in before. Do you start any testimony tonight? It’s gonna be the truth, the whole truth, the level of truth. And then, lady gentleman, if you can state your name and record.
Jennifer Bryson, Wartsole Road, Hillsborough, New Jersey.
Thomas Decker, Van Cleef Engineering, 32 Brower Lane, Hillsborough.
Why don’t we switch? Can you bring the other microphone over, too?
Shall I repeat that? Jennifer Bryson. Is it on? Wartsole Road, Hillsborough.
Thomas Decker, Van Cleef Engineering, 32 Brower Lane, Hillsborough.
Good evening.
Mr. Bernstein, do you want to qualify me as a professional engineer and planner?
Are you here in that capacity, Mr. Decker?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Can, has he been sworn in?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Decker, could you indicate to the Board and to the public at large your qualifications, your current licensure, and where your education is?
Yes, I have a Bachelor’s of Science in Civil Engineering from Rutgers University. I am a licensed professional engineer in the State of New Jersey since 1993, a licensed professional planner in the State of New Jersey since 2000, a certified municipal engineer. I have appeared before this Board on multiple occasions. I currently serve as the Board Engineer for the Land Use Boards in Alexandria and Bethlehem Township and Hunterdon County, Rocky Hill Borough, and West Amwell Board of Adjustment.
Okay. Any objections?
No.
Head shake, no, so please proceed.
Okay. So, this evening’s meeting, and I appreciate the Board’s attendance and can appreciate where the Board sits. As a municipal engineer, I can tell you that a lot line adjustment is typically one of the simplest types of application that can appear before a planning board. It’s simply the relocation of a lot line between two properties, and in the case of the Bryson subdivision, they’re proposing, Mrs. Bryson is proposing, a five-acre shift in property. Five acres coming from Lot 3 in Block 169, which currently has 80.247 acres, transferring five acres of that to her property at Lot 3.01. Her property currently is substandard in lot area, however, it has grandfathering provisions. By adding the five acres from the adjacent property, it will bring it into a conforming lot area. Required is 15 acres, this will bring it to 15.903. The adjustment, as I said, it’s a simple lot line adjustment, it’s fully conforming, there’s no variances requested, and there are no improvements proposed, and that’s key. We’re not proposing any development, it’s really just moving a property line. There are, within that five acres, there are some environmentally constrained areas, there’s a small pond, there’s a stream, there’s some wetlands, and so forth. Those areas are currently protected by Township Ordinance and DEP regulations as they stand now. Okay, so if anybody did any type of development within those areas, they’d be subject to In Mr. Coys’s letter of February 23rd, he identifies that, or recommends, that conservation easements be applied to the property to preserve those areas. To add conservation easements at this point, when there’s no development proposed, doesn’t really accomplish anything because those properties, that’s already protected. It would also eliminate Ms. Bryson’s ability to obtain any viable permits through DEP should she need to do any improvements to the property. For example, DEP has a General Permit 11. What General Permit 11 allows you to do is put a drainage pipe through the wetlands and to a stream. There may be an occasion where if there’s a drainage issue on the site or whatever, and she may need to put that in, she may want to do that. If a conservation easement is placed on that now, not knowing what those developments, what any improvements are, she would be precluded from the benefit of any of those permits that she would have otherwise been entitled to. So that’s why we, you know, we’re not looking to put any conservation easements on the property because it is already protected by regulations. There are two ordinance sections that Mr. Coys identifies in his letter regarding Ordinance 188-38A with buffers and conservation easements, and basically, there’s a statement in there that says “Conservation areas are used to preserve buffer areas and environmentally sensitive resources.” But that section also says “Buffer areas and conservation easements shall require site plan approval,” which we’ve been determined via Mr. Coys’s letter of February 23rd that we are not required to have a site plan because we have no improvement, and that these buffers and conservation easements are required along all lot and street lines separating residential uses from arterial collector streets, separating a non-residential use from either a residential use or residential zoning district, and along the street lines where loading and storage areas may be seen from the street. We have none of that. None of those criteria apply. The second ordinance referenced in Mr. Coys’s letter is Ordinance 188-64 Natural Resources, or Natural Features, and it states “Natural features such as trees, rocks, swamps, hilltops, and views shall be preserved whenever possible.” Again, there’s no disturbance proposed in any of these areas. And the ordinance further allows the Board to grant waivers from certain parts of that ordinance, but since there’s no application before the Board for development at this time, there’s no way for the applicant to know if any waivers would ever be requested on the property. Both of those ordinance sections fall under Article 4 of the ordinance. Article 4 is Design and Performance Standards, and it starts off, the very first paragraph, very first statement says “Any development shall demonstrate conformance to design standards that will encourage sound development patterns within the township.” Again, we’re not a development, we’re not, don’t propose any development. If you look at the ordinance definitions in Section 188-3, “Development is defined as the division of a parcel of land into two or more parcels, the construction, reconstruction, conversion, structural alteration, relocation, or enlargement of any building or structure of mining,” and it goes on. We’re not proposing any new lots, we’re simply moving a lot line between two properties. We’re starting off with two lots, we’re ending up with two lots. We’re making one of those lots more compliant with the Township Ordinance. So it’s our opinion that those conservation easements, while may be well-intended to be placed at this time, are premature until such time that there may be development proposed on the site. I don’t know if anybody has any questions about the application or anything like that, but that’s why I say this should be fairly straightforward.
My comments for this is I maintain my recommendation that it would be a good planning practice to put a conservation easement on this area of land because of what has been identified. I would like to reiterate that this has been identified by the State of New Jersey as being Level 5, the highest level of resources of endangered species, and this is an opportunity for the Board to provide additional protection, in my understanding that there have been subdivisions that have come to the town before, where there’s been opportunities to protect these types of resources. So I maintain my recommendation as stated in the letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have a chance to go ahead and review the latest plans that Van Cleef had provided. They’ve satisfied all those requirements, in my mind, in addition to what Mr. Coys said. I would say to the Board, if they are to consider this for application for approval tonight, that they make that a condition. Conservation easements are very typical of any applications, whether they be subdivision or site plan, and you do find that sometimes when you find extraordinary resource value of particular lands, it is good to go ahead, good practice to maintain a conservation or introduce a conservation easement as a rider to a deed.
So, any of the concerns that they raised with regards to DEP, if there was a conservation easement, is that valid, or are there options?
There are options. I’ve seen options. You know, some of the other adjacent municipalities have options when they deal with conservation easement, so it’s something we could work with the applicant. I wouldn’t have a problem doing that.
If I may add, there would be opportunities to put provisions in the conservation easement deed that would attempt to give the applicant what they’re requesting, although I would like to also put on the record, one of the challenges with this is being unclear of what is being requested for the future. So it’s difficult to know what to potentially put in a deed restriction if we don’t exactly know what the intentions are in the future.
That’s a further comment and conversation that we would have to have with this applicant to work that out.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
The question that I have is, I know Mr. Coys and Mr. Hay are recommending conservation easements. My question is, are they required? And the reason I bring up are they required, because if this is a, as a fully conforming lot line adjustment, unlike where there may be a variance that’s required, or something that may appear before the Board of Adjustment, where, for example, if it’s setback variance in exchange for getting a setback to allow someone to put in addition 10 feet closer to a property line than they, they’re allowed to, one of the conditions is typically to provide some kind of landscape buffering from your neighbor. If this is a fully conforming subdivision that requires no relief, I understand the recommendation, but I don’t know that, I don’t believe that the conservation easement is a requirement for this type of application, and I understand what Mr. Coys is saying about other subdivisions. Those may have been subdivisions that created other lots, created improvements, and those conservation easements would have applied. However, this is a lot line adjustment, so I’m not sure, maybe Mr. Bernstein can address it better, as to whether or not the conservation easement is required, and if the Board can require it on a fully conforming lot line adjustment.
Mr. Bernstein?
I’m relying on the opinion of the engineer and the planner relative to the recommendation for a lot line as to a conservation easement to be placed on. I don’t believe that the code specifically requires it, but the code does not prevent site from occurring.
Questions, comments from the Board?
Well, from what I understood, it may not be required, but based on the recommendation, the planning board could require it, and there was talk of options that might mitigate any future transactions or whatever, but, so there’s not a significant negative impact. That’s what I’m hearing, right? So I think that works well and is added protection.
I think that, you know, as I mentioned, implementing a conservation easement typically is very difficult to have removed from a property once it’s an deed, and, you know, we’re working off of hypothetical what-ifs of, you know, if Ms. Bryson was going to improve the property, my understanding is she has no intention of doing any improvements on the property. So I believe that, with all due respect to Mr. Coys and Mr. Hay, I do not believe that a conservation easement can be required because it’s a fully conforming, and that conservation easement language that has that provision is located in a section that doesn’t apply because we’re not proposing any development.
Can I also make one comment, which is, you’re talking about the discussion of an easement now, which would have to do with all the potential future things I might want to do or not do. Why would we just not have that discussion at that time? I’m not proposing to do anything now. If I do decide in the future, which I have no plans to do that, to do something, I have to come before this Board again, and then you can have a conservation easement that would reflect what the Board wants, which is probably in line with what I might want, and can talk about specifics. My guess is you’re never gonna see me again, so why have this discussion on hypotheticals? Why not have that when I’m actually in front of the Board proposing to do something? And then you actually have some authority to talk about an easement. This is all hypothetical at this time. I have no plans to do anything other than nothing.
I have a quick question. Did you mention there’s already environmental restrictions on the property?
Yeah, there are DEP regulations, okay, that protect these areas, whether it’s flood hazard area, wetlands.
It’s a vernal pool. It’s protected.
Any number of things.
But specifically, what are those at this point in time, if you know?
What are the environmental constraints?
Right.
Well, there are, we know that there are wetlands on the site, we have not delineated them. We know that they are, there is a small stream, if you can call it a stream, going through the property, and that there’s a small pond on the property. So, those are back there, and they have buffers associated with them. It’s in a wooded area, you know, and the regulations, if something improper was done within those areas, the EP could be notified and violations issued, and that would be the same as if it had a conservation easement on it. So it has pretty much the same protections and violations, it just doesn’t hamstring the applicant to a conservation easement that she may otherwise have the benefit of permits available to her.
On your survey, do you know how much of an area that those conditions cover on the five acres?
I would imagine that they cover a good part of them. We have not, like I said, we have not done a wetland delineation, that would involve engaging a wetland expert, delineating the stream, having, or the wetlands, having that field located, getting a letter of interpretation from the state, and so forth. It’s not a, it’s a costly process, and I would imagine, and I’ve looked at the Board’s professionals, you know, what limits, or what level of environmental study are you, would you require for this conservation easement? Because it’s not just a matter of throwing a line on a plan, it’s a matter of significant expense to the applicant who proposed to do nothing else on the property but move a lot line.
Wouldn’t it make more sense to do all that when and if I’m ever actually gonna consider doing something? There’s no way we can write an easement that would ever possibly spell out all the what-ifs.
For?
The laws are, you know, you have a master plan, you have regulations, the state has regulations, there’s, it’s extremely difficult to do anything back there, and if I ever wanted to, I have to follow all of those laws. To go through an easement process now is to tie my hands in a way that, you know, the rest of the town isn’t tied up, and I don’t see how we would ever be able to figure out every little detail.
I have a question.
It just doesn’t make any sense to tie it up.
If you, if you grant the applicant, if you don’t put conservation easements in there, what would prevent the applicant, they don’t necessarily have to come back to the Board if they want to build a house on it, right? So I mean, what’s to say, like, we would ever see you again?
No, I would have to come back. You can’t just go build something without.
Once you have a conforming lot, can’t you just, do you have to come back to the Board at that point if you wanted to build something?
Yeah.
I don’t know the answer to that, but.
I don’t believe, Mr. Coys can correct me, I don’t believe we require site plan and Board approval for single-family homes.
Right.
But there’s already a house on it, my house.
Right, but my point is, like, we don’t know, you know, I mean, you say now, we don’t know what’s gonna be built on there.
Well, I think.
We just don’t know.
As a.
It’s all wet, I mean, I don’t see how you could ever build anything back there. It’s wet, and that’s what the state and the town regulations are for, is so that I can’t build back there. I can’t imagine I wouldn’t have to come before something to be able to build.
And that could be a condition of any.
Could be.
Of any approval, that.
Could be, yeah.
There’s any, ever any time that there’s an improvement on the property, that Ms. Bryson needs to come back before the Board.
That might be a workaround, I don’t know.
I think to follow up on what the Vice Chairman said, Mr. Chairman, I mean, one of the things I mentioned, I don’t, I believe the applicant’s engineer didn’t hear what I said, I said it by deed, I didn’t say it by plan. That means there’s language that would be in there to protect sensitive environmental areas, and you could put that, and it’s broad brush, I’ll admit it, but at the same point, you know, it kind of puts the burden on the applicant if they do decide to come back, that they do have to put together a plan to not just address, you know, wetlands and floodplains, but then there’s also threatened endangered species, and believe it or not, those could be extensive, a lot more extensive than wetland buffers and floodplain buffers. So if the language is placed in there by deed, I think that would probably cover and satisfy some of the concerns that Mr. Coys and I have, and that, you know, we’re expressing to the Board.
So what would the deed language be?
That’s why we would have to sit down and come up with something that would be creative to protect not just the owner, but then also the interest of the township and the surrounding properties.
I’m just a little confused. Are you saying that the laws and regulations don’t currently protect, you know, I mean, doesn’t that kind of point to maybe that we need to be strengthening our laws and regulations? I don’t understand how you’re saying they’re not protected. It’s a beautiful vernal pool.
What if, on the same note as a deed, what if there was a deed notice in there that stated that to the rear of the property there are environmentally sensitive areas that are subject to any and all permitting as required by local or state?
That’s where I’m going with this, including but not limited to, and you would elaborate that in a rider, and that’s typical, that is done in many different municipalities, as you probably know.
Isn’t that basically saying I’m gonna follow the law?
It is, but it’s at least pointing out the issues that would have to be looked at in case that there would be any, let’s say, concerns, you know, neighboring residents if something were to be affected. Again, including but not limited to, but at least we spell out in the language of the rider as to what the sensitive areas are that we have issues with.
Without calling it out as a conservation easement?
It would be, you could even call it a conservation area. An area is not defined unless you have meets and bounds, but you can go ahead and put some language in to cover yourself.
Which basically says it’s important ecologically, which we’ve already said in the application.
And therefore, you know, I would agree with your engineer that, you know, having some type of a broad brush rider that would cover that would then, you know, protect not just the residents of Hillsborough, but then also protect yourself.
Is that okay?
I think where we’re at, Ms. Bryson, I think I expressed this to you last meeting, was obviously this decision goes in perpetuity long after you sell this property, so you may not have any desire to build on this property, but we don’t know what happens after that. So we just want to make sure that, in perpetuity, that the language is proper to protect the site as much as you want us to protect the site, as you do, and that’s, we’re not looking to prohibit you from owning this property, but we want to make sure that it is protected correctly for generations to come.
Right, and again.
Right.
Isn’t that what laws and regulations are for?
Well, laws can change, too.
Right.
Right, so what we do, what we do is we can create what we want to keep there regardless of what laws may or may not change in the future.
Right, I just don’t want to give up, I don’t want to give up any rights that I would have or anyone else would have in the town. I don’t want to be singled out, so.
Well, no, we’re not singling you out. It’s obviously a part of a larger piece of property that I understand is under negotiations with the county, I believe, to be purchased, so that property, if. So that property, if purchased by the county, would be protected as a lot, and you're asking for a piece of that. So we just want to make sure it's contiguous with what's going on around it. Correct?
That's correct, Mayor. And I think, Mayor, just to add on to what you had said, so that you don't know what's going to happen down the line, I believe by including the language in the deed, basically the deed notice in there puts anybody else, any future purchasers, on notice that there are environmental constraints to the rear of the lot, and they are going to have to comply with that, whatever the laws are. And the laws at that time are probably going to be a lot more stringent than they are today.
Okay. Any additional questions? Because I'm going to.
I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Bernstein, if this board is to approve this application tonight, that we would work with him with the language that would go into the resolution concerning what the rider's going to actually say.
I'm going to just look for motion open to public.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. If there's anyone from the public that would like to question the testimony of the witness or even of the applicant, since they're both sworn in, you know, you know the process?
Currently, I don't remember who owns it now. How is it currently protected? Are there easements? Are there restrictions? What now is protecting it from what you're afraid Ms. Bryson might do?
Currently, the DEP regulations on freshwater wetlands, flood hazard areas, the township ordinance itself protect it. In other words, if she does anything in those areas that conflicts with any of those regulations, she's issued a violation notice. If by the state, there may be mitigation where things have to be undone and so forth. So there are very strong enforcement availability to bring the site right, you know, back into conformance, should they violate any of the current regulations. Just like if someone violates one of your zoning regulations currently, and they put up a building that violates a setback, and they're in violation, the zoning officer goes out, gives them a violation notice, and they have to either take down the structure, appear before the Board of Adjustment to get approval, or whatever, so they get a violation. It's the same thing with the EP.
So the applicant is asking to continue what's already there?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a little bit confused. This is conforming use. Is that a correct description?
Correct, yes.
And the township attorney seems to indicate that there's no requirement for the establishment of some kind of restriction, easement? Deed restriction, is that the right term?
I can't speak for Mr. Bernstein, but I think he relied upon the opinions of the board engineer and planner.
But you indicated that you're not required based upon what you read in the ordinance?
Correct. I believe it's not required because the section of the ordinance that addresses conservation easements is in a design and performance standard that applies to development. And since we are not a development, those conservation easements do not apply.
And in your experience on other towns, have you had that same type of experience with regards to the question of what is applicable with regards to a similar situation like this?
Yes.
And what would happen in the other town? Would you be required under those circumstances?
No, the town would certainly ask, but the applicant would have the right to say no.
And is the planning board legal? Well, I can't say legally, okay. Is the planning board, in your experience, ever required something that wasn't required by law?
I'm looking for this legal opinion.
I can't answer.
In your experience, has that.
Mr. Brooks, Mr. Decker is not an attorney and can't answer. And you are well aware of the facts, that the mere fact that a board or a governing body is not required to do something does not prevent the board from either getting a party to agree to a potential condition or instituting a condition itself so long it is not prohibited from doing so. And the law does not prohibit the board from potentially instituting a condition. Be careful, the argument you make, it may come back to haunt you somewhere else.
I'm all in favor of the board doing everything it possibly can to protect things. I'm just curious as to what legal authority the board has.
As I said, I don't believe Mr. Decker indicated during his qualification.
I am not, I am not an attorney.
Nor a licensed.
I am not an attorney. It's the way that I read it as an engineer and planner, that it's not required.
I certainly want the board to do everything that is legally authorized. I just didn't want them to do something that wasn't, that's all.
Yeah, that's why I asked Mr. Bernstein what his opinion was, because he is the attorney in the room.
Correct. And just to clarify, you are proposing to do nothing other than move a lot line. Is that my understanding?
That is correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, another one.
Maria Janus, 6/7/20, East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. Also Hillsborough Township Property Owner, Block 86, Lot 3, 2155, Camplain Road. Attorney Bernstein, can you?
No, no, no. Questions?
Oh, okay. So what you just heard stated here, that there doesn't have to be an ordinance or a law, the board can just decide that this is what they want from the applicant? Has that been your experience?
Ms. Janasek, first of all, it's not a question Mr. Decker can answer. And secondly, in your usual routine, you tend to pick and choose the pieces of its statement you want to hear and ignore the ones you don't. The board is not prohibited from taking certain, if the board is prohibited from taking an action, the board cannot take it. In the absence of a prohibition, the board has the ability to either request an applicant to go along with a condition and/or to impose a condition as part of a approval.
Okay. Attorney Bernstein?
I'm not the witness, so I'm done.
Right, but I don't say things to you like you are well aware, or you know, or you have a routine, or you whatever. I think that's very disrespectful, okay?
Ms. Janasek, where were you two nights ago?
So I am, what?
Where were you two nights ago when you made disrespectful comments about myself?
I did?
Yes, you did. You might want to go back and check the record.
All right, I'm going to.
What did I say?
I'm coming in the middle and breaking you two apart.
Wow.
Ms. Janasek, continue the line of questioning.
Okay, that was my question. Because what I'm hearing, and so I would like to know, based on your prior experiences, have you ever, where there was no ordinance, no law, and yet the applicant had to do certain things that the board requested, though it wasn't required by law?
The only thing that I can offer is that, in my experience with lot line adjustments similar to this, I am not aware of any that have come before me while I've sat on a board where a conservation easement or other constraint like that was imposed. That's not to say that maybe the board can't do that. Mr. Bernstein would know better. But I'm just saying that based on my experience, that that has not happened for the reasons that I've outlined. So it doesn't put additional restrictions on the property for any potential development or improvements.
Mr. Decker, have you ever been in front of a board where conditions for approval have been asked for and granted by an applicant?
I'm sorry, what?
Have you ever had a representation where conditions for approval have been requested of an applicant, and they have been granted as part of, that may be?
That they've been requested by the board and granted?
Yes.
Yes.
Essentially, we're asking as a condition of approval for possibly a deed restriction.
Right. And I think, and Ms. Bryson and I have discussed, we think that the deed language is a good compromise.
Right. Just trying to relate it to Ms. Janasek, and she's heard as a condition of approval a lot, like trees, mitigation, you know, that's basically what we ask for. As a condition of approval, would you do us this?
Right. And the condition that we're agreeable to is the deed notice, as we've discussed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last call. Okay, move to close.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Have you concluded?
Anything further?
Okay. So do we need to? Do we?
Up to the board what they want to do. You have your recommendations from your planner and your engineer. You have the comments of the applicant indicating that it's not necessary. So it's up to the board. You've been advised that any condition you're going to put on, and Mr. Decker can correct me, is not necessarily going to be approved unless it is a condition they're willing to accept. But you are not required necessarily to seek the applicant's approval in order to place conditions on an application.
I think the deed language with notice of potential restrictions and environmental soundness of the property is a perfectly acceptable and reasonable compromise. And I believe the applicant, through their witness, has acknowledged that discussion from the board. So unless the applicant has some other specific language that they want to bring to the attention, I think that's perfectly reasonable. It looks like the witness has acknowledged that that is correct.
That is, that is correct.
Thank you.
So you want to make a motion to that?
Yes, I would make the motion to approve with restrictions in the deed noticing future property owners of the environmental soundness or conditions on the property.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, any final comments? Do we need to go back out to the public? No. Okay. So we have a motion on the floor for approval with the deed conditions, rider, whatever we have, we're going to get that language in. So may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Delcourt?
Yes.
Mr. Scovado?
Yes.
Mr. Rasteg?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Serragin?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. You guys need a nap. I'm sure you guys are hungry. Doing okay, Mike? Yeah, okay. Okay, we're going to go to our second application this evening. Homestead Road LLC, file number 21-B-B-25-MSPB. Time of decision, June 30th of this year. Yeah, this application's continuing from January 12th agenda without notice.
Mr. Chairman, before, again, I need to recuce myself in this matter.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I believe counsel for the applicant is before the board. If the objectors wish to take their spots, they are more than welcome.
Yes, so the objectors, the side of the, yeah, the table and chairs to my right, for the objectors, chair.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals. Peter Wolfson of the firm of Dave Pitney here on behalf of the applicant.
Mr. Wolfson, Mr. Wolfson.
Yes.
Please, please feel free, pull the microphone close to you, almost like a rock star, so that everybody can hear you.
Good evening, my name is Mike Passaro. I'm the policy director for the Watershed Institute.
Brian Tarantino, one of the objectors to this application, Fairfield Lane.
Mr. Chairman, I'll repeat my appearance since some in the back said they couldn't hear me. Peter Wolfson of the law firm of Dave Pitney here on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Chairman, this represents the continuation of the public hearing, and we are here to present testimony on the site plans for the two lots that have been discussed as part of the subdivision testimony. You'll recall that there was testimony on the minor subdivision that was completed and questioning.
We can't hear well, thank you.
My mouth is right into the microphone.
Why don't you take the mobile mic there?
No, no, it's not the mic. It just got to speak up a little bit.
Right into it.
Yeah, you put it right in. Yeah, no, move the mic.
I had dinner already. I'm as close as I can get. At the December 6th meeting of the board, our engineer, our planner confirmed that the subdivision was fully conforming. The project engineer, Mike Ford, appeared and testified some seven months ago on both the subdivision and the site plan. On February 17th of '23, Mike Ford, our engineer, provided a submission package to the planning board office that eliminated any and all variances that had been identified in the reviews, as well as two of the identified waivers. I'd like to now recall Mike Ford to walk us through the 217-23 submission.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Turn the mic off.
Sure. Yep, all right. I'll try to be close and loud.
Very good.
I submitted a letter to the board on March 1st. The revisions that the applicant is referring to were submitted less than 10 days before the date of the hearing. They are substantial revisions. There are substantial documentations, which your own professionals have indicated they have not had a full opportunity to review. I would object to the use of those documents or testimony regarding those documents, as the public did not have the required time to review and look at. I will also point out, just for example, on site plans, there are errors. So sheets are inconsistent with each other. Sheets eight, nine are inconsistent with sheets 10 and 11, for example. The sheets eight and nine refer to the bio retention and infiltration basins, while sheets 10 and 11 refer to those things as constructed, wetland constructed ponds. So until everyone has a real chance to review those, I think it would be improper to go forward with that kind of testimony. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might address that. First of all, the statement that it was not submitted 10 days in advance is factually incorrect, as acknowledged by your planner, Mr. Coys, in his memo of March 1. They were submitted 10 days in advance, and that is in compliance with 4055-D9, the requirement. The legislature has determined that that is the timeframe that is necessary in order to be able to testify to the materials that were submitted.
I'm just going to ask, is that, does it state clearly if it's calendar dates or business days?
It says 10 days. It does not say business days. And I can tell you with 38 years of practice that it is 10 days, calendar days.
Mr. Chairman, it's available to the public. It was available to the public on February 21st. It was not available to the public on the 17th.
Mr. Chairman, it's not up to the applicant to determine when the municipality determines to make it available to the public. In certain circumstances, perhaps with an unpopular application, it might not be made available to the public at any time in advance to the hearing. So we've met the requirements of 4055-D9 by submitting it in a timely fashion. And we don't acknowledge that it was not made available to the public.
Well, I'll speak as a member of the public tasked with reviewing hundreds and hundreds of pages of material that, some of which was modified. is that on a reasonable basis, that it's appropriate to give the board experts, as well as the public, a reasonable amount of time to review those kinds of materials. And so even if you, you know, I would expect that a reasonable applicant would want to be cooperative and defer to the public when they say, gee, we really, we just didn't have enough time to review all of those documents.
Mr. Chairman, the application was filed on December 22, 2021. It's time to move this application forward. We've met the requirements of the law. Everybody up on that dais swore an oath to follow the statutes of the state of New Jersey and the ordinance of this municipality. We respectfully request that we proceed.
Mr. Coys, do we have a local requirement for submission? Do we define calendar versus business days?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not aware of that. I believe it's stated on the MLUL is where we get that.
And Mr. Coys, in his memo of March 1, acknowledged that it's 10 days.
I would also like to put on the record that it was posted as soon as possible. Obviously, when materials are provided at a late hour, we do everything we can to try to get it posted in a timely manner. But when things are submitted, basically at the last minute before that 10 days are very close to, there does take some time in order to get these materials posted, and we moved as fast as we could.
So by insisting on it, you're kind of saying you're not interested in being cooperative with the process here and helping the public understand what you're actually applying? Because, yeah, you applied back, you know, in 2021, but there are a lot of changes. It's very different. The application and the materials that you submitted, besides being inaccurate and erroneous, besides that, they're voluminous and extensive and lots of information in it. So you're saying that you're not interested in having people really understand that in order to go forward?
I'm sorry if you said it in the beginning. Are you an attorney?
I can hear you.
I'm sorry if you said it in the introduction. Are you an attorney?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Mr. Bernstein, do you typically swear in a non-attorney who is providing testimony?
Mr. Wolfson, Mr. Sorry, Brian, I apologize. Mr. Tarantino is here as an objector status, and he obtained objector prior to your involvement in this application. For the purposes of the record, the material was submitted to the township planning department at 3:45 on Friday, February 17th, just before a three-day weekend scheduled on February 20th. The planning department posted the material early on the 21st of February, which was Tuesday, which was the first day upon which that material could be posted. This is not a piece of, not a one document. This was a significant stack of materials, leaving aside the compliance or non-compliance. There is a much more equally fundamental problem, other than the provisions of NJSA 40:55-D-9, which has been set forth both by Mr. Coys and by Mr. Hay in regard to the current condition of the property and the ability or the inability to go forward with any application, whether conforming or non-conforming, based on the fact that the current, there are three current DEP investigations going on regarding the site itself that renders into significant question whether any plans, the ones that were originally submitted and/or the ones that have now been amended, can comply with the law based upon, we don't know where certain things exist or not exist, and cannot be corrected by providing them in a conditional manner.
Mr. Chairman, if I may address that.
Please.
NJSA 4055-D-22, conditional approvals. A, in the event that a developer submits an application for development proposing a development that is barred or prevented directly or indirectly by a legal action instituted by any state agency, political subdivision, or other party to protect the public health and welfare, or by a directive or order issued by any state agency, political subdivision, or court of competent jurisdiction to protect the public health and welfare, the municipal agency shall process such application for development in accordance with this act and municipal development regulations. And if such application for development complies with municipal development regulations, the municipal agency shall approve such application conditioned on removal of such legal barrier to development. Sub B, in the event that development proposed by an application for development requires an approval by a governmental agency other than the municipal agency, the municipal agency shall, in appropriate instances, condition its approval upon the subsequent approval of such governmental agency, provided that the municipality shall make a decision on any application for development within the time period provided in this act, or within an extension of such period as has been agreed to by the applicant, unless the municipal agency is prevented or relieved from so acting by the operation of law. I would suggest that that controls this situation. There's been a flurry of memos and correspondence, both from municipal officials as well as interested parties, and this statute dictates that this board must proceed.
Right. Well, the second part of it is irrelevant, because that's after the fact. That's about permitting and anything that may come up during their review. It's the first half. I've got some questions on that, is, does that clearly state if the investigation occurs prior? Or is it a hypothetical that an investigation or something, or legal matter comes up afterwards?
Mr. Chairman, what it means, and what the case law has interpreted it to mean, is that outside agency actions relative to a property are not an excuse for a board not to process an application as required under the municipal use law.
But what if it would have a significant impact on the site plan? Because I didn't hear any of that in the statute you were reading, that if such agencies' actions, findings, renders a site plan, I don't know what to call it, inappropriate, that they would have to come back here? So I think, from what I've read and what's gone on, or the email correspondences, is that concern that what may arise out of that investigation could significantly alter, render the site plan inappropriate or inadequate?
I could just, Mr. Chairman, that the purpose of this statute is to prevent boards from doing exactly what is being contemplated and argued should happen here. It is to protect applicants. The applicant has determined that there is nothing that has been raised relative to what it's aware of, as having been raised by interested parties relative to the property, that will ultimately result in a material change to this plan as it is before you.
Well, I wouldn't expect the applicant to know about any imperial, any significant changes to the plan, because the investigation isn't over yet.
So the mere existence...
You don't know what...
Well, you make the point, Mr. Chairman, the mere existence of it...
Mr. Wolfson, we'd like to let the chair finish.
I apologize.
Right. The point is, is they have an active investigation going on. They're not reviewing a, an application for permitting, you know, from an approved site plan. What they're doing is an active investigation, at least this is what appears to present it, is with the current ownership of the property. So it makes it a very interesting situation. And I'm not sure if the law has actually, you know, addressed that, where there's, you know, from what I understand, there are violations that have been issued and an active investigation. So I'm trying to understand, you know, the argument that you're making with the statute there, because, again, it's typically part of the permitting process.
I mean, and if I could, if I may point out, I don't think it's a matter of whether the applicant feels that nothing in the remediation or investigation or, you know, removal of waste and garbage and contaminants is going to affect the application. It's not up for the applicant to decide that. What we have are board experts saying, we're concerned. We don't feel this should go forward, because we're concerned about it. And so it's the board's experts advising the board that we need to find out more information about what, about the remediation in order to go forward. And I think we ought to put a lot of stock in the board's experts and their lack of comfort that this makes sense.
Mr. Chairman, in your discussion, you basically, I heard you to say that if anyone issues a complaint that may or may not lead to an investigation, and I am not personally familiar that there is an investigation going on...
There are three active investigations, Mr. Wolfson, going on. Your client is aware of all three. They've been advised of that for a period of time long before your involvement into this matter. DEP is investigating, actually, there's an ongoing investigation being conducted on 199 Homestead initiated by DEP that's ongoing through 2025 to start. And there are two ongoing investigations regarding 203 Homestead, one brought by the township, and one brought by the farmer who was apparently obtained by your client to keep his farmland assessment application and filed his own complaint. And DEP is currently, has advised the township and the parties that there are ongoing investigations of all three situations.
The extension of this line of argument that is being expressed is that the mere issuance of a complaint to the DEP would have the effect of stopping any application from proceeding to be processed. That's exactly...
No, no.
That's exactly... Let me finish.
The situation here is different.
Mr. Bernstein, how come I can't finish?
Fine, sorry, I didn't realize you hadn't finished, Mr. Wolfson.
Well, you weren't listening.
Sorry.
This statute is, in fact, in place specifically to address that concern and protect the applicant, so that the mere allegation of someone that's not happy that there might be a development application taking place will not stop the planning board from addressing its obligation to hear the application.
The statute does not render the decisionary tale to the applicant without the involvement of the board. The board is not in a situation here where it is usurping the DEP or any other agency in making a decision. What it is looking for ostensibly is guidance from DEP as to whether or not this application can go forward in its current situation and/or has to be rejiggered, for lack of a better phrase, from what it is currently proposed, or anything, or can be built at all. So the board is actually taking what we believe is a cautionary situation in terms of going through a process that should be done correctly and completely versus piecemeal, depending upon the moving situation of the applicant. 4055-D-22 does not require a board in and of itself to take an action simply because the applicant believes that you can put a condition on everything. And that's what the argument, the argument is that everything is conditional, and therefore you have to go forward with the situation. And if you believe there are issues, just put a whole bunch of conditions on it that will ostensibly require, if necessary, to come back, versus finding out from DEP whether or not this property can even be developed in its current state, which is not within this board's purview, and clearly within DEP's. If DEP says there's nothing there, the application goes forward. If DEP says there is something there, then depending upon what it is or isn't, will have an impact on this application.
I was just going to add to that, Mr. Chairman. I did write a letter, and I know Mr. Coys does well, on February 22nd. I thought it was very clear, you know, we had written a letter back in September with our concerns. So in kind of highlighting what Mr. Bernstein said before, you know, we've known about this issue for several months, and we brought it up again, even after we had discussions, which we elaborated our letter with the licensed site remediation professional of record. The issue, and I appreciate Mr. Wolfson's rebuttal, he's absolutely correct. I'm not going to argue with him about that. But I am going to make the argument that the problem is with the wetlands, is that the wetlands, the wetland limit limits, and also the buffers change. That affects the township stream corridor ordinance that we have an effect. And as Mr. Coys gently reminds me all the time, the fact of the matter is, this board cannot grant relief from that. So if I can't tell you and elaborate to you whether or not that's going to be affected, I don't know how the application can go forward.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has an application in for an LOI dealing with the wetlands. Applications are routinely submitted and processed by planning boards throughout the state without the LOI being finalized by the DEP, and that's as a result of the requirements of the MLUL.
No, I'm aware of that, but I don't think, I've had a situation like this, where there's an active investigation that may impact that. I totally agree with you, if there was, this wasn't, you know, a routine application, that that would be, but considering, again, an active investigation going on that, as our professionals have already stated, that could materially, again, impact the site plan.
And just to clarify...
No, no, no. Well, I was just going to say, I mean, as I'll say, it's, you know, it's your applicant's dime, because if you want to provide testimony to this, and then, you know, the investigation concludes, otherwise, you're going to wind up coming right back.
Understood. The applicant has submitted data and information already into the record regarding the allegation that the farmer's work on the property caused a substantial change in grade or conditions, and concluded that it did not. So that's been submitted to you.
Right. But I think also be aware that this board may not be able to make a decision at the end of the day, pending the outcome of that, because I don't think our professionals, as they've already stated, aren't going to give us guidance in those areas. So, you know, we can hear, but I don't expect a board decision.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity to go forward. Thank you.
So I'm just going to throw things out. Any comments? Because I've done all the talking up here.
All due respect, sir. important. I would agree to that.
I absolutely agree to that.
So in an effort to minimize wasted time, because as you said, this application has been going on for quite some time, wouldn't it be more prudent to wait to get the report back from the DEP that you feel is going to be a nothing to show show, that we can then move forward with full confidence with the application, knowing that that obstacle is out of the way, so that we don't have to come back again six months, eight months, or whatever? So in an effort to save time, that we move to have a continuance to maybe a month to see what the DEP would bring to us on these three investigations, then that we can move forward with more confidence as to what the application is, in full fairness to both parties?
I don't agree with that, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Mayor, respectfully. We...
I didn't think so.
It's worth a try.
I could ask.
Yeah, and I think fortunately for you, you probably don't deal with the DEP regularly in how you spend your time.
Be surprised.
Well, especially now, it's very optimistic to think we're going to hear from them in a month. It's been approaching a year on the LOI application already. So again, to the chairman's point, we appreciate the opportunity to proceed.
Mr. Chairman, one, I appreciate the discussion. Second, as I mentioned, you know, I object based upon the timing of these documents, which is another issue I would ask for the board to consider and decide. And in the alternative, if the board decides to want to go forward with the hearing, reserve the ability to cross-examine Mr. Ford to a future hearing, and the professionals and the public have a chance to review the material. And the professionals and the public have a chance to review material.
I guess I would be confused if we proceeded, I'd be confused about what we would be, you know, what is the application? Because it might need to, you know, should we assume that everything's okay? Is that the assumption we should be working under? Assume that, you know, there's no problem with the wetlands, that the position of the buildings are where they're going to be, that the roads and, you know, all these other aspects that could get affected by the outcome of the investigations that are ongoing? You know, what should we, what assumptions should we, as the public, be making with regard to these applications?
Well, just as the board has professionals, the applicant also has professionals, and they have established their opinion based upon the plans that have been submitted as to what the wetlands will be delineated and accepted by the DEP, among other issues.
So, we should trust the applicant?
You should trust the applicant, subject to, as the municipal land use anticipates, the DEP confirming it.
I'm sorry, sir, and I don't mean to be mocking, but you have a vested interest in the outcome. So, I would pose to the board, I would ask that the board actually defer to their experts.
Well, some might argue that many of those interested in this application have a vested interest because they don't like warehouses. So, I think there's a lot of that on both sides. So, with that, I don't want to get into further debate with you. We ask respectfully to proceed with our testimony.
I'm going to ask our board professionals, would you be making the same request as the objectors as far as reserving the right to cross-examine their professionals? Because I understand that you may not have had enough time to review the documents presented.
I mean, certainly, our job as professionals, as, you know, testimony is provided and we have concerns, we will certainly address it as we can. But we do need additional time to review the application. And I do want to state that I am interested to know what your professionals will say regarding the section of our ordinance regulating stream corridors, which is 18864E, specifically talking about prohibited activity and a part of the ordinance that says, "In no circumstances shall a waiver be granted for the following activities," activities in which you are proposing on your plans. So, I'm very interested to know how in the world can the board possibly grant any sort of approval when you have access going through a stream corridor? And as of right now, you don't even have your LOI and you don't even have an application to the NJDEP to alter that stream area. So, I'm very curious to know what the applicant is going to say in support of that. And further, I am also looking for testimony regarding when you get to this point, more information about the proposed use. Because in my professional opinion, the information that's been provided up to this point is not sufficient for us to determine if the use that you are proposing is something that is permitted. So, I'm very interested in knowing for the production of the town and this board to know what specifically you're going to be proposing.
Just on that last, first of all, we're happy to try to answer any questions, including the one you've given us a preview of. So, thank you for that. We're proposing by our application that we, as stated in the application, that we utilize and develop the property for permitted use under your ordinance. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, may I call my witness?
I want to ask, Mr. Bernstein, what are the options do we have?
I'm somewhat fascinated that we're even at this point. You've got professionals telling the board, forgetting whether or not they've had a chance to review the amended plans. I'll go back. I'm fascinated we're even at this point. You have your professionals telling you, not only have they not had an opportunity to review these plans, but the current ongoing DEP investigations render the existing plan, forget the amended plan that apparently is now at issue. The existing plan at issue in terms of whether or not it can be built in any way, shape, or form as to what has been proposed. We don't know where the wetlands are, forgetting whether or not there's an LOI out there. There were wetlands designated that it is clear DEP is investigating as to whether or not they're actually still out there. And if so, where are they? You've got issues raised as to what is on the 203 Homestead site in terms of what may be contaminated and/or at issue. And 189 has an investigation with a three-year obligation for proposal for remediation of soil issues and possible groundwater issues of which we have no testimony on or any reports regarding same. All waiting for DEP to tell us, everyone, the applicant, the board, the public, et cetera, what can and cannot go on in that property. I don't know why our testimony from Mr. Ford is going to elucidate that situation one minute more. It's still up to the board what you all want to do, but frankly, you want to go on and do this in the proverbial dark? That's up to you. But I don't think we're going to be any better off hearing an application with the understanding the applicant can move forward under 4055-D22. And if you've got any problems, just put some conditions on it. We don't know what you're putting conditions on.
I'm sorry, are you done?
I believe I'm done, Mr. Wolfson.
Okay. Respectfully, the condition would be, as I'm betting all your resolutions have, all the resolutions I drafted in decades of representing zoning and planning boards, and that is approval of all outside agencies that have jurisdiction over the application. That's what the condition would be.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, this is not an approval. This is not a conditioned approval, which is what the intent of 4055-D is. It's a conditioned approval based upon actions to be taken by an outside entity making a formal decision. We're not making, they're not making a formal decision as to whether or not to grant an LOI. They're making a decision as to whether or not this property, at the current situation, can be developed. And in what shape can it be developed? That's what your professionals have told you. That's what the investigations are calling for. And as the board is aware, we've made inquiries to DEP on the status of these investigations and what's been raised by all the people. It's still up to the board. Board wants to hear this application, you're more than welcome. The question is, what are we hearing?
Does the stop-work order issued by Mr. Coys back in December have any relevance to the discussion or?
It is relevant to no further action can be taken on the property as to anything that was going on on the property. It doesn't stop the application, per se. It has no ability to stop the application. I think there are other things to stop the application much more, by itself, much more than a stop-work order issued by Mr. Coys.
Mr. Hayes, is there an ROA on this property?
Mr. Mayor, no, there is not a remedial action outcome. There is a remedial action plan. The public is probably not aware of this because if you look at the NJDEP public site, the only thing that's been done at this point has been essentially a preliminary assessment and a remedial investigation. However, it was indicated to us by the licensed site remediation professional that a remedial action plan is being established and that the statutory limits in terms of the time that they have to establish that plan and then to go ahead and proceed to go to a REO, that has already been established and that is on the public record. From the tone of the, what the applicant's LSRP, or I should say, the owner's licensed site remediation professional told us, they are going to be undertaking actions. But those actions with respect to, which really is slow remediation, I think are not as significant as what the wetlands issue is and, of course, our township stream corridor.
Any more comments from the board? Thoughts?
Chairman, I'm going to move to ask for a continuance of this until we have more information from the DEP. I think it's the best course of action for the board and the public and the applicant. I know that the applicant is not in favor of that, but there are just too many unanswered questions to sit there and listen to the testimony of Mr. Ford, as detailed as he always is, to the plan and to all the other professionals that would come till we address that immediate issue. Because that will also address a lot line movement, whether it could be, which would address the size of the building, if it was actually in conformance. So, it all hinges on what and if, where can be built where.
Additional thoughts? Comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I, one final comment, that is, if the concern is the areas of concern that have been addressed, and it would be Mr. Ford's testimony, we have our architect here, those plans have been on file for many, many, many months. And we will have our traffic expert here as well, who respectfully requests that we proceed with our architecture and traffic testimony.
I'm just wondering, because if this plan has to change, I would assume that traffic studies are going to wind up changing? Architect? Because if the building's got to be redesigned? I mean, I know one of the other applications had complete redesign of the building, so...
May I ask a question as well? My understanding, and again, I'm coming in at this point, is that there's been some discussion about the fact that the applicant has not, has confirmed that they do not have a tenant for this use now? That is the case as we sit here now? Is that an issue for this board? Because it's our position that the board, again, is obligated to process an application, even on a building where a tenant has not been identified. And in fact, market norm is such that without an approval, tenants will not consider a lease. So, I'd appreciate some feedback on that point.
Mr. Coys, because I know it has spelled out in township ordinances.
Correct. There's a specific section, and I apologize, I can't cite it to you right now, but there is a section of the ordinance that requires information regarding the use, hours of operation, basically description of how the operation would conduct itself on the site. Section E, I apologize not being able to cite the specific section of it. It does exist in the checklist, and so that's the section that actually authorizes for it to be referenced in the checklist. So, there's all sorts of details that are supposed to be provided so that my office can make a determination of the use that's being proposed, is even one that's even permitted by ordinance. And as you had noted earlier, that the indication is to propose a use that complies with ordinance. However, our ordinance requires that you provide additional information for us to make that determination. So, more details need to be provided. I believe there was something that was submitted recently that gave some sort of list related to, I believe, the building code in terms of possible things to be stored. But I do believe that we are going to require more information about how the site would be operated. And that's something that's required by ordinance.
Thank you for acknowledging receipt of the two-page document that was submitted, the written description of proposed warehouse use and operations. Respectfully, I would ask, Mr. Coys, if you need further information beyond that, which has already been submitted, if you could let us know what you're looking for, we can, I'm sure, respond to it.
And also, like you, Mr. Wolfson, I was also not the original person involved in this application. I've been the planning director for the town for less than 30 days. So, I would like to have a little bit more time to look through the application and identify all the things that I believe need to be addressed. Thank you.
Congratulations on your new position.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, we received, and I apologize for not bringing, a certification from Mr. Wagner that he has viewed prior transcripts, which makes him eligible to participate and/or vote in this application since he's been so boisterous on this matter so far.
And me too. Mr. Bernstein, same for me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Mayor, you were making a motion, I believe?
So, I would suggest that we continue it to possibly May 25th, our business meeting, to the next first available opening, so that we don't hold hostage, so to speak, so that hopefully we have that information from the DEP to move forward. Move to the 25th of May.
Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Chairman, can I just ask what it is exactly that we're waiting for?
I think it's been pretty clear by our professionals here that we're waiting to get some clarifications to the ongoing investigations as to if there's anything there there that would effectively change the plan that you're proposing? Because there's no, if it does, then that would allow us to look at it in a light that is more realistic than it is to a hypothetical. We have lot lines we need to move as part of the application for a lot line adjustment. We have wetland and stream corridor, and we also have an LSRP that is still working on it, an open violation. So, until that is cleaned up, I think that that would preclude, with all due respect, what the tenant may be or may not be down the road. We're strictly looking at the fundamental site in its entirety and what can be built where before we get into that.
And you also might want to check 189 Homestead. I mean, if you look at it from the bypass, you can see there's a pretty big pile of garbage on the property. I don't know if it's new or if it's existing, but that would be, you know, I don't know if it's, you know, more stuff that's happening on the site?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, we continue our objection to not being allowed to proceed tonight. And also, there is a time to act of June 30th of this year. The applicant wants to place on the record that it will not be granting an extension at that time.
Okay. I understand. But also, the board makes decisions whether or not, you know, we'll decide if they have enough information to make decisions. And sometimes those decisions, if there's not sufficient information, will err on the side of caution and be conservative. So, hopefully, the issues are resolved. So, did you make a motion?
Yeah. Don't have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Wagner, second it. Okay. So, the motion is to carry this to March 25th, the business meeting?
May 25th, 2023.
Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, before the vote, is there no earlier meeting than the May 25th? We're sitting here in the early part of March.
Right. I mean, because we've got an issue with April, so April's out.
I'm sorry, again, I'm new to it. What's the issue with April?
One of our meetings is falling on a couple of religious holidays, school vacation, so, and we're already looking at slating that business meeting as the replacement. so, and we're already looking at slating that business meeting as the replacement, so... We're going to just take a five-minute recess to further look at the calendar and check with some of the board members' calendars, so...
Appreciate it, thanks.
Okay, we're back in session. Mr. Coys?
Yes, so after speaking... Okay. Can everyone hear me? Okay, after speaking to the applicant, what we are proposing here is for this to be carried to the April 13th meeting and for them to have their information, the information from the DEP to the satisfaction of the board 10 days prior. And if not, then it would be carried to the May 25th, 2023 business meeting.
Without further notice.
I'm sorry, the second date was? May 25th.
May 25th, without further notice.
So we're carrying it to April 13th without further notice. You'll start again at 7:00 PM?
Correct.
And we'll be in this room?
Correct.
I guess you can decide what you want to do on the 13th if we don't proceed with our testimony.
Correct.
We can make an announcement, or we'll be heading into testimony.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we need to...
You have both.
Yep, so...
Motion.
So it's a motion to carry the application to the April 13th meeting at 7:00 PM without further notice?
Correct.
And we'll be in this room?
Correct.
I guess you can decide what you want to do on the 13th if we don't proceed with our testimony.
Correct.
We can make an announcement, or we'll be heading into testimony.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we need to...
You have both.
Yep, so...
Motion.
So it's a motion to carry the application to the April 13th meeting at 7:00 PM without further notice?
And...
And also, if necessary, to May 25th at 7:00 PM without further notice.
Right. And all documentation relative to the April 13th meeting must be at the planning department by April 3rd.
Correct. Okay.
So moved.
Available to the public by April 3rd.
Well, it's going to be in the office.
And then we have to get it out.
We'll get it out.
And the May date too, 10 days in advance.
Correct.
10 business now.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, the mayor's made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. It was a tie. I'll let Michael decide.
What was the name? Who made the second?
Mr. Wagner.
Thank you.
No, Mr. Wagner.
Okay.
He made the first second, then made the second.
Okay, can we do it by?
Roll call.
Roll call, okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Delkport?
Yes.
Skovo?
Yes.
Straztag?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Leponti?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Saraji?
Yes. Okay. See you all on April.
So everybody heard that, no notice, 13th, so God willing, if not, the 25th of May. Okay?
So just, just one point. In terms of who would be testifying next, I believe at the last hearing, Chairman, you said that Ms. Kaphone would be back to testify. That would be the next, the next expert, because she, we hadn't finished cross-examining her. So whenever the next hearing is...
I don't think it was on this application, I think it was on the other one.
I, I can quote the...
Was it?
The transcript, sorry.
Maybe. I get confused, but...
But I, I don't want to do that.
Right, but I'm, I'm going to let the applicant decide because things have changed. So if the site plan has changed, I think it would be who was to listen to the engineer first, before the planner.
And...
Well, no, I mean, this was about, on the, the planner, on the subdivision issue. Remember, you guys, the decision was that they needed to bring testimony with regard to whether the subdivision is proper.
Which they have and may change again depending upon where we are with the site plan. We'll leave it to Mr. Wolfson.
If I may, I mean, our position is, is that we completed our testimony relative to the subdivision.
That, that's not what you said, Chairman.
We'll, we'll check transcript.
We'll go back and check as well, I was not here, so we'll check. But we appreciate that in terms of order.
Part of it may depend... I'm sorry, we're at 10:30, but the next time we convene, we will continue with Ms. Kaphone. If there are audience members or anyone from the public that wants to continue cross-examining her, so you will get a bite at the apple. So with that, we need to...
Well, she'll come back eventually, so don't worry, that bite's coming, so. But I will consult, you know, with Mr. Bernstein, and we'll, we'll, we'll see what her schedule is like, you know. Hopefully, if she can make it the 13th, great, and, you know, we'll see where that could...
Not to delay this hearing any farther. But the intention is to put Mr. Ford on the stand at the next hearing, whatever date that it would be.
The intention was to put Mr. Ford on first tonight. I, I can't tell you right now what, what'll happen next time.
Would it be possible to let the board know which experts you plan on presenting, and therefore the public can know as well?
If we know that, we'll certainly let the board know, and we'll make an effort to know that in advance and let the board know.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Well, no, we still have... No, did we do that? Oh, we didn't do the roll call yet?
We did.
No, we did, no. I don't think we...
There was still... You don't need to do this.
No, I did it all, I swear, I promise.
To move the meeting?
To move there.
Right. Okay, all right. All right. Okay. So we need to talk about April 6th. Yeah. Okay.
One more order of business to do, people.
Yeah, okay, so there was a request...
Thank you.
To discuss the April 6th meeting, and understanding that is falling on some religious holiday, school vacation, so we do have our business meeting open on the 25th that could serve as a substitute. There's right now only one applicant scheduled officially.
25th of what month, Mr. Chairman?
Or is it 27th?
27th of April.
Sorry.
April 27th. We may, we may have an application for that, Mr. Chairman, and I'll let you know as we get closer whether we will or won't.
Okay, but we have 303 scheduled on the 6th.
Yeah, you have an application on the 6th, but I'm just saying, for purpose of the business meeting, we may have one as well.
Right. You want to check this? Okay. So any thoughts, discussion?
So you're looking to swap the 6th with, for the 27th, essentially?
Correct.
Okay.
So we wouldn't need a...
If, if the board isn't, if the board's intention is to cancel the April 6th meeting, and we also need to make a motion to, to carry the 303 Amwell Road application to April 13th, and then you can, we'll see where we are with that application.
Okay.
And then, the 27th as a date?
27th, I just want to advise the board that there may be an application. It's not currently on.
Okay. Okay. So is there a motion to cancel the meeting of April 6th, carry the 303 application to April 13th?
To follow any testimony regarding Homestead Road LLC.
Right. And I don't recall 303 required notice?
It wouldn't require, it doesn't require notice.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to make those changes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Repeat me what I was talking about.
Just to confirm, Eric, can Ms. Smith second if she's not eligible to vote, since she'd be 10? I don't know how the rules are.
We got 1, 2, 3, 7.
9.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, John's not here. All right. Great.
Thank you.
You're legal. Make sure.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor with a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Delkport?
Yes.
Mr. Skovo?
Yes.
Mr. Straztag?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Out here.
That, that, that's your 10th, that you lost.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Leponti?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Saraji?
Yes.
Maybe.
Okay, just a reminder, we do have a meeting next Thursday, March 9th, at 7:00 PM. And with that, I'll entertain a motion of adjournment.
So moved. Second?
Okay, so the mayor made the motion, Mr. Wagner seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're adjourned, see you all next week.